Good evening. This is the Melford Planning Board of Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. We have minutes in the meeting.
I make a motion we approve the meeting minutes of January 21st, 2025.
Second?
We moved in second. We approved the minutes of January 21st. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed unanimous of five. This is a joint meeting. We've got nobody else here that takes right ahead. So you're on.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Josh Field with the National Planning Council on behalf of your comprehensive plan process with that on committee and with the planning board as well. So a brief update this evening. I don't think it'll take too long, but we have been making progress. Sort of the full team deployed on bringing the draft plan into lead and really working on that. I'll give you an update. We talked last time about organizing the plan, shifting to a thematic organization. So we have those themes defined now and can share those with you. Then I have a little more detailed draft outline of the plan document in the room for a little more detail than last time. And some initial draft layout, just templates that we're working with. If you can take a look at the plan, how it might start to look as we get it put together. And just see if you have any feedback on that before we give you that. So if you could get a hand in with me. And then we also wanted to spatialize some recommendations. To allow the text of the plan to put together a future land use vision and actually graphic, which we can relate to different locations in town, get the themes and goals related to the actual places. So that's a document or a graphic overview this evening as well. So thank you all for your dedication to this process. We are barreling towards the end of it. And really will be, the target is to have a draft plan for your review by the end of March. And then there will be a little bit of review that continues beyond that point. The, let's start with those draft plan themes. So if you recall over this process, we're in the meeting number 10 tonight, which is amazing that time flies like that. But over those previous meetings, we have discussed each of the topics in a bit more of a deep dive conversation. We've made our course through each of those topics. It's in part the reason why I'm here alone tonight with you all this evening. We have no other topic experts to get through this evening. So that helps us get through this a little quicker than normal, too. The process organization has been organized around those themes, but we're actually making a shift as we discussed last time in the plan organization to really move from those topics into the themes. So themes are what I'm going to get to right now. We had the idea of them last time, but hadn't had the actual themes defined. So now we have nine themes that are defined. The topics aren't disappearing altogether. We're still, as we move toward organizing the document and those themes, still keeping track of the colors and the icons that you see in this diagram. So that if someone's really interested on transportation, for example, they can see which of the goals relate to transportation. So we have nine themes, draft themes, which are subject to your review and feedback. But we did also test that reorganization. So moving the goals into the theme organization. So away from the topics, so each of the goals now are nested under themes. And that exercise actually worked out pretty well. So we have relevant to the themes that they're now located under. Five or six nested goals, give or take, depending on the theme. It was also important that the themes be cross cutting across different topics. So we don't have a theme that's, for example, all transportation goals. They have a variety of goals from different topics, which I think is another good test that the themes are the right ones and looking good as a collection. And we have, usually even up to four different topics in a theme, which I think is good and shows the synergy, the interrelationship between the different topic areas. So here are the nine themes, just straight off, and then I'll go into a little more detail and show you how those topic goals get organized. The first is to build community and bridge cultures, which we've heard a ton from the community in a variety of different ways. The second, of course, is to strengthen downtown as the center of community. We've talked about that a lot together and it's a focus of the community as well. Improve traffic safety and reduce congestion. Again, that's a topic which has come up again and again. A theme which has shown up in many of the different topics and goals. Maintain the livability and charm of neighborhoods. We've heard a lot about the importance of the neighborhoods and, you know, keep keeping what people love about them and their history and charm. Continuing to improve effective governance. We've heard various goals around that and feedback about ways to make that actionable. Advance climate resilience and sustainability. It touches on natural and open spaces, but some of the other topics as well. Strengthen the health and well-being of the community. Continue to support a thriving local economy and strengthen communication and engagement. So we found with those nine themes that we are reinforcing the content of the vision statement. And we're also able to organize the topic strategies and actions, and it all is working out pretty well. The themes themselves, you see as noted here in that topic headline on the slide. The themes are actually chapters. So we're thinking about these themes as sort of headings of the chapters. And then the narrative supporting the theme will be showing the details of why we think this is an important thing for the town. And then set us up to talk about the details of the goal strategies and actions. So you can see here how that nesting works as well. So it gives you a little more detail about how we're thinking about building community and bridging cultures. And you can see the nested goals from a variety of topics. In this case, from downtown, economic development, housing and cultural and historical resources. So it includes anything from diversifying the housing stock to adding capacity for business engagement and new business development. These are all ways that we think that building a singular community, right now, there's a little bit of, I would say, division in communities that we're seeing in the town. And so bringing those together through those goals and through the actions that support these goals is a way that this is all starting to play out. So I think hopefully this makes, is legible and kind of makes sense. The next is to strengthen downtown as a center of community. You can see there's a variety of topics represented there. Land use and thinking about the zoning options to enhance investment in downtown. The downtown was a topic itself, so we have some of those downtown items as well, but not all of them, interestingly. And then housing as well, I think, plays into the vibrancy and vitality of downtown and the viability of those investments. And then transportation, of course, as well, has been a topic of interest in downtown as well. So we see how some of those goals are coming together to support that overall theme. And we're just, I'm not showing you all the detail again. We talked a little bit last time about the strategies and actions, which give even more detail underneath the goals. Improving traffic safety and reducing congestion. You can imagine on this topic or how the topic goals get nested under this theme. It's a little bit transportation heavy, but I think reassuring that it's not only transportation. So we also have thinking about downtown specifically on the traffic safety and congestion side of things, because that's a major corridor, both for pedestrians and for cars. And then also thinking about land use and the long-term land use patterns to make it possible for people to get around without a car for a daily trip or an errand. Maintain the livability and charm of neighborhoods. This includes housing goals, thinking about affordable housing, support for property owners and aging housing infrastructure. Thinking about land use policies, really carving out, you'll see this on the land use vision plan as well. Think about the neighborhoods as separate and distinct from the areas of transformation and investment in the town. They're kind of different areas and have different strategies and approaches to them. And then thinking about open space and the expanding the accessibility, which we talked about last time in that deep dive conversation, through connections to those open spaces. Not necessarily new open spaces, but really utilizing and making more effective the open spaces that do exist and getting people connected to them. Continuing to improve effective governance. This also cuts across four, actually, that's one, two, three, four, five different topics. So that's things like continuing to update the zoning bylaws, as has been the town's practice, to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, supporting the commercial tax base, planning for future infrastructure around transportation and other infrastructure needs. And then historic and cultural resources and strengthening the ability to effectively manage and preserve those resources. So you can see how a number of these recommendations are pointing to effective governance. And then the last two are pretty directly related to that. It's two, capital improvement processes and department structures and organization. Advancing climate resilience and sustainability as a theme is a little heavier on natural environment and open space, but also includes land use and transportation and then also community facilities and services. And really expanding, I think, the ability of open spaces, stormwater, groundwater, protecting water resources, all those things to work together to support this theme while also thinking about things like reducing auto dependence in the town. Strengthening the health and well-being of the community. There were a few, I think, goals within a variety of topics that point directly to potential health outcomes in the town, making sure quality of life is also enhanced. Those are looking at income disparities, overcrowding in housing, displacement in housing, thinking about unhoused populations in the town, actual safety from vehicle collisions, et cetera. And then promoting equitable access to cultural assets and other assets in the town and environmental and open space resources. Continuing to support the thriving local economy, not just economic development goals here, but again, from a variety of topic areas. That includes focusing on the industrial areas of the town, making sure that the zoning is updated to continue to attract investment in those locations. Redevelopment opportunity throughout the town and downtown specifically. Creating opportunities for multifamily housing where the town wants that to occur and being proactive about that. And integrating arts and culture into public spaces and thinking about that as a driver of local economy. Strengthening communication and engagement is the last item. And this was one where it was, it ended up actually pretty focused on community services and facilities, but I think that's fine. It also includes cultural and historical goals as well. Improving outreach and accessibility of town resources, supporting boards and committees effectively. Improving inclusive and equitable access to town services. All of those are a part of strengthening communication and engagement and really bringing more residents into interaction with town services. Any thoughts on how those themes shaped up or thoughts about strengthening them? Appreciate that.
The strength in health and well-being?
Yes.
I think I would, this is based on my, what I've heard from the community, but the communication services and facilities, in particular the communication, just having residents understand what's available to help them.
Yep.
I think that's something that I would add in there.
So maybe a little bit of a cross connection between this theme and the last theme, which was the community engagement?
Yeah, which, yeah. And I was thinking that I thought the community, I felt like the communication and engagement was almost, until I saw the layout. I was thinking it was probably pretty close to the first one, I think.
Bridging the cultures?
Yeah. Just my initial thoughts.
No, that's helpful. And it is, I think they all do point back to the vision statement, which makes a lot of those connections, too. And I, one thing, excuse me. One thing I think that we can explore is how some, I think some of the goals do support multiple themes and how we can maybe annotate that so that it doesn't become the case that we're repeating a bunch of information in the plan, but have a symbology or something where it says, you know, also refer to this theme under, this goal under this theme that was supporting bridging cultures or supporting strengthening communication. But that's a good point. I think also in the, we'll see, you'll see in the chapter layout of the actual document, we have a chapter which sets the stage for the theme chapters, the body of the report. And I think in that chapter, we can actually lay that groundwork a little bit about the interconnectedness of them. Any other thoughts? All right, I'll move on to the draft plan outline, and I think it'll help illustrate where it's all headed. And you'll see how these themes fit together. So we have, we'll start with the introduction, of course, very similar to the document that was shared at the last year's town meeting. And basically just hit the basics about plan purpose, what this process was about, what the context for this plan is. And then we've organized the next three chapters as in relation to each other. So we have a chapter which talks about and outlines Milford's past. So we'll have key events, a bit of the context of the history, population growth and demographic shifts, growth and development overall, and some of that historical context about, for example, Milford being an immigrant community will be one of those themes that we highlight. And then touching on Milford's present, really bring forward the data, the current data about the demographics of the town, some of that important data by topic, which you saw in the existing conditions brief, which we shared at the end of August. And that will bring, kind of set the stage for where Milford is today. Then chapter four really sets the stage for the arc of what we've heard from the community in this process. So setting the context for the themes which will follow, articulating the vision statement, defining the community priorities, which we've heard through this process. And then also including that future land use vision map, which I'll share next with you all. And then that will set the stage for those next nine chapters, which would be a chapter per theme. And for each theme, we would have a summary about why it's relevant, get into framing the goals that are underneath that theme. And then also have a map which supports that theme and sort of how it relates spatially to the assets of the town. And get into then articulating the goal strategies and actions that support that theme and where the town can make progress on affecting that area, which the town has, through the residents participating in this process, expressed such a priority for it. So that structure will repeat for each of those chapters. I think it should be, I think having a parallel construction of those chapters will be nice for people referring to the plan, looking through it. They'll have easy way to either refer to a single theme or get a whole feel for all the content of the plan. Then the last, that will be a lot of information. And so the last chapter is to actually focus on an implementation action plan and just pull forward some of those items, which we think are most critical to move on next. And of course, you'll have the comprehensive nature of the plan, refer to all the information in those preceding chapters, but that will get the ball rolling on those critical next steps. Thoughts on that? If you're interested, we have an even more detailed outline, but this is probably a reasonable level to stick at. But we've been, we're at the point now internally where we have, each of the various aspects of the plan have been assigned to team members and we're working through that, and then we'll be combining them together.
How close will you be to having some kind of a draft?
Yeah, our, that's, I think it's a reasonable question in terms of how this, how the ad hoc committee and maybe even planning board members would like to review information as it's create, as it's kind of in draft form. Our goal is to have the written content of those plans or of those chapters concluded by March 3rd is the internal deadline we've given the group. From there, so that would be, that would be one reasonable, like we could share those to you all and you could comment on those, that, those text versions. They won't be dressed up in the way that we plan to dress up the final plan documents. That will occur after we have all that text and information put together. Those will be just basic shared Word documents. From there, we'll be shifting to an in-design document. I don't know if that, that, any care too much about those details, but we'll be shifting to a more graphic friendly layout document and taking all that text and information to actually then integrate it with the photos and the maps in a little nicer way than Word would allow you to do. That's work that will be occurring in March, but you could technically be reviewing like the written content prior to that, if you'd like. It's up to you.
Well, again, we're, it's going to be in a chapter type, type form so we can, our comments and everything. Finish, finish form after hearing our comments and everything and locking it over and everything.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's a good approach. We can plan on sharing the less dressed up text versions so you can take a look and then be providing comment. And I think we can still be proceeding with the, you know, dressing it up and then can integrate your comments in the text as you give it back. Great, I like that. So these aren't, this is our, the beginning of that in-design document with a more graphic layout document and some draft layout templates. But this is where these, the information in these is more in the placeholder nature. But gives you a feel for the templates that we're starting to develop for that more graphic layout. So each, each chapter we're imagining would have a nice sort of spread chapter break, where you'd have a nice photograph of the town and a little bit of information about what that chapter is. And then as you get into the details of the, each of the chapters, just some details about the layout. I think we're headed towards sort of a two-column format and interspersed with full-page map layouts, some where necessary or appropriate, either diagrams, graphics or figures that reinforce through the data that we've collected and relate to the text. So this is kind of the, more the look and feel of where it's headed. So if you have reactions to this, it's a lot easier for us to integrate a change at this point than it will be, say, mid-March when it's all, you know, we've populated, taken this approach and populated it through a full document.
So you're planning on doing landscape layout then on it?
This is, it's shown as spreads, but they would actually be, right now it's shown as two portrait eight and a half by elevens. It's just, you're seeing the, the document as a open two-page spread, if that makes sense. So it's actually, yeah, that's a little unclear the way this is shown, but there should be, technically, there should be like a black line.
There's a line there.
Yeah.
That's two pages.
Yes, exactly. That's two pages.
Yeah, because that'll, that'll allow you to have larger, larger type font for the text and still keep the general layout scheme throughout, the same design throughout the whole document.
Correct. Thank, thank you for that.
Publish and bind our copies.
It's a good clarification. Good, good to get that blindsided because I didn't even realize that. Yes, the document is portrait eight and a half by 11. And so even if you, probably the way we will create the PDFs, it would be viewed electronically in this manner as well. So you'd get, where something is full bleed across two pages, you would get that effect. But it would actually, if someone were to zoom into full page, it would be a single eight and a half by 11 portrait page.
So we'll be publishing something?
Yes, it would be like that.
Oddly like this.
Correct. We have a few other examples here. So this is just how you might see, for example, summary of previous plans. You might see some of those plant covers, some timelines about the process that we've gone through and photographs of the engagement. Here's where you see like that series of Milford's past and present and some of the either historical timelines or demographic information interspersed with the text explanations. So you can get a feel for how the document will come together and feel through those various chapters. Here's that third in that series of chapters about Milford's past, present and future with the land use plan diagram, sort of spatializing some of these recommendations. And then how you might start to see one of those thematic chapters show up where we're trying to get some photographic imagery which relates to that theme. Again, we'll have a map on one of those pages, which also reinforces the theme as well. Any thoughts about what you're seeing in sort of the graphic layout or suggestions? Even as specific as like, you don't love these colors or like different approaches like that?
It looks like that meeting wasn't very well attended.
Maybe we'll just draw a little photo. Actually, you have better shots.
Yeah, we do. We have good, good.
Variety in meetings.
Yes.
Maybe we find one compared to that.
Good point. On the, on the topic of photos specifically, we do have an open call invitation to all of you or anyone watching this at home. If you do have great photos that you wouldn't mind being in the plan, we would love to receive them. And particularly, we are happy to credit whoever sends us the photo. We'll say, you know, so source this person if they want to be credited. But we would be happy if you'd grant us permission to use photographs that you have of Milford that are beautiful. We would intersperse them with the thematic chapters specifically. So please send those to me directly if you have any.
Is Robin, is Robin happy? Is it the library? Robin Bilbin has probably the best collection of Milford photos of anybody, but obviously he's, they're his. I'm not, I'm not sure whether I thought at one point in time the library or the, yeah, historical may have gotten a whole bunch of them from him.
Oh my goodness. I remember that fellow. He used to be in Millcarrion.
Yeah, that's him.
I came across, when I was cleaning out the office, I came across a photo of Town Hall. The road is still, Main Street is still dirt and there's, you can just catch a corner piece of the wagon wheel. So wow.
There's probably not, this section probably wasn't here. Because I think this got added on after.
No, this wasn't, I don't think this, this was the last.
Yeah, I can't remember, I can't remember if the photo showed that much, but.
That'd be cool.
The cells, yeah.
Jail cells are over there. The foot was, was here and it ended, this got added on at some point.
I had some of the jail cells at the shop.
I think I found the specs for it when they added this on today.
That's, I mean, those are the best, I, when, did you talk to, you talked to the historical, did you not?
Yes.
If you reach out to them in terms of pitches, I think they have them. If not, somebody can probably try to reach out to Robin. Those would definitely be, I mean, he has some real interesting pitches of Milford that he's put together over the years. I mean, some of them are not actually his even. I think he just, he was the curator of them and put them together.
What is Robin's last name again?
Bilbin.
We can scan the pictures we have of the jail, bar office, same difference.
Yeah, send us anything, anything you have or are aware of, even if it's a snapshot of a great sunset or something you took one day, but anything like that would work. It's always, always interesting what we get back when we do a request like this. But it's also, you never know what picture will fit best with a certain like text or theme. So it's good to have a good collection. All right. So any other thoughts or questions about the plan itself, how it's shaping up? Okay. Okay. The land use vision plan we wanted to share with you as well, which is, you know, a little bit of an abstraction. It's not quite like a zoning plan. It's not quite exactly just a land use map, but we tried to get a little more sort of loose edged, kind of bubbly approach to the major areas of the town and describe those areas with, as the legend suggests, some overarching approaches to those areas spatially and how they're being approached through all these various themes, strategies, and goals, et cetera. The first, I think, to note is I would say that the, all the yellow are the neighborhoods, of course, and that's mostly, as the legend denotes, neighborhood preservation is the approach there. So I think a lot of the goals and strategies that are clearly about more transformative investment or redevelopment, those aren't necessarily targeted at the residential neighborhoods. So I think that should be reassuring to people. We've heard a fair amount through this process that people like their neighborhoods the way that they are and, you know, there, there are improvements that can be made, of course, but most of those improvements are things like making it easier to get from your house to an open space or something like that. Not, not that your next door neighbor is going to turn into a multifamily dwelling or something like that.
Well, with 40Bs and 80Bs, they will.
Yes. The, the 40Bs are, I think, are, will be addressed in the plan in that, in so much as to say that the more the town can get proactively in front of planning for housing development, the more control you'll have over 40Bs as time goes on. But I agree, like, in the current context, those are showing up in a way that is unplanned and inconsistent with the town's zoning and future plans. So.
The mapping on the vision plan hopefully isn't suggesting that we unprotect all this open space that's already protected because it's not mapped correctly. So I'm assuming our Zoom meeting Friday will, will be able to get at that as well as the rest of the zone will be.
We will. And that, no, that is not what we're trying to portray.
Good.
And this map in specific is on the list of maps we want to go over with you.
All right, thanks. I feel better.
So yes, the, the other big idea here, we'll just touch on that, open space, is that there is a very strong open space network and a very strong network of protected open space in the town. And again, that, the master or the comprehensive plan is looking at ways to expand access to those open spaces, continue to preserve those areas which are not currently protected, and really build up the resiliency and natural function of those, that vast open space resource network that you have in the town. Then as you shift to some of the purplish tones, red tones, and the pink tones, those are really the, the economic centers of the town where we would see more of that focus on economic development, some transformative investments to keep those places as viable and active engines for the town's tax base. And then you can see in the red specifically focusing on the downtown and enhancements to the, to the downtown area as well. There's also connectivity and walkability corridor improvements along the main street corridor as you lead into downtown, particularly from 495. And then also thinking about the regional medical center as its own health and wellness area and thinking about that as a, a major sort of feature of the town, and also the Route 140 corridor and how it connects to that regional medical center. And then we've also highlighted each of the gateways into the town at the various town boundaries. Some of them would be treated differently than others, but they're all, I think, important to recognize spatially and think about how, how the town is, entry into the town is perceived at those moments.
I think you missed one. 140 from the, what appears to be south.
Oh yes, you're right. Got that.
I don't know if it's actually orientated north-south.
Yeah.
Yep.
495 should have told me.
I would say that the, the gateway symbol is a little overwhelming.
A smaller symbol? Yeah.
Especially given what you can do physically along the roadway at any of those gateways. This is definitely overkill.
If you asked me what this plan was for without the title, I would say gateways to the community.
Ah, yeah. That's good. Great feedback. So when we include this graphic and diagram in the plan, one of the ways that we'll accompany it with text is actually relating the themes and goals to this diagram spatially so that people have a better understanding of where certain ideas will apply, where they won't apply. It just, I think, helps to clarify if someone were to read, you know, a certain economic development focused idea and think like, this is happening in my neighborhood, I don't agree with this. It's, this, I think, helps to clarify geographically where these different ideas are occurring. Any other thoughts, pointers about things that we could do to make this better?
No, but it is interesting when you think about it in terms of where, where this is going at the end and what I think most of the actionable items are, the percentage of land use that, that, that most of the actionable items are, you can see from this map, is pretty small. I mean, most of the stuff that you're going to come through with neighborhood preservation is entirely limited, limited as to what you can or can't do until the state changes what we can do with zoning again, or until they change what zoning is or not. So you've got, between the, the greens and the sand, light yellows, you've got 70% of the town that is extremely limited in what, what's actionable. And there may be some in the open space, obviously, in terms of access, but, you know, at the end of, at the end of the day, I think that's still going to be somewhat limited.
Well, the state's next move is to make everything a minimum three family, since it's zone, the state two family, but that's the next one.
More than likely.
Yeah. And that'll be just in time for the next comprehensive plan.
Question for you on the walkability enhancements. You know, when you think about other towns that have a state route that goes right through the middle of town, and you also think about the other resources we have, you know, in terms of like for just straight up walking, you know, we have incredible bike paths that kind of go north-south and loop around out of the town two different ways. And then you think about how busy those stretches are to that. How do, I look at that and think like, wow, all the way across that to the east, it's already very occupied land. There's a lot of tractor trailers rolling through, you know, it's busy, you know, this, it's very developed, you know, and you're thinking, how walkable is that really ever going to be for the dollar relative to other things that we have? So wondering like how other towns have navigated this, right? We're not the only town that's cut in half by, or a main street is basically defined by a state route with, you know, 18-wheelers trying to get through. And we're, this plan is doubling down on that same stretch of road. And I'm thinking like, that's just, there are other ways to approach that problem, I guess is where I'm going.
I don't think I have it up at my, on my fingertips to pull up, but the, the map, we do have a map which shows very clearly the existing sidewalk and trail network, which I think is substantial in the town. And what's interesting is that it is, it does form pretty strong connections up into the vast swath of neighborhoods, sort of as you move north and west. But I think there are some meaningful disconnections or gaps. And so I think one of the strategies on walkability specifically is to look at that network, identify the gaps, and then make strategic connections to actually make it easier to move from as much of the neighborhoods as possible into that existing system of networks, both trails, open spaces, et cetera, and then get to other parts of the town. Now, when you're talking about the, the state route cutting through, you're talking about 85 or 16?
16, principally, to the center of town.
Yeah, and I think that it, the.
I guess one of the things I'm thinking about as I look at this and see where this is going, I wonder about making roads that aren't the main street more walkable, that are parallel to it. We all know that there's roads that are a block or so away that if you were walking with your kids, if the sidewalk was bigger, you might be interested in that one more than the one with the 18-wheeler. You know, and you think about like, well, I can't move, I can't move 16 and I can't move the trucks. Like, instead of doubling down on that, I'm just wondering, like, other towns must have gone through this. And that's, that's one guy's idea, right? But I'm like, well, you're, you're the expert, you've seen a lot of different towns do it. And I totally take your point, you do need some walkability where people live, right? Not just into the wilderness, right? I totally get that part. But I was like, I keep thinking about, I'm not sure that that road is the way to go. I think, what if it was parallel to that?
Well, but the most likely spot to get those major improvements, bike lanes and sidewalks, is when Mass DOT rebuilds Route 16. So you see from Oakdale to downtown, through downtown, you've got bike paths that may or may not be advisable to ride your bike on, but that's a different thing, and sidewalks. The problem for the town on the flip side of that is we've lost all the parking. So, you know, there is a bill to pay when you do that, other than, yeah. So the, the state highways as identified routes are the most likely place on new major improvements where you'll see not only new sidewalks, but you'll see the, the road diet approach so you find space to put a bike path. But you lose all that parking in the process to do it because you're limited in the width. So that, in terms of that level of designation of the state route, that's what's happening. All the rest of the stuff are town ways. And the town doesn't seem to be overly excited about even necessarily including two sidewalks and new subdivisions. In fact, our bylaws were specifically amended to reduce the amount of payment by providing for the possibility of having only one sidewalk on one side of the street, or only go on halfway around a cul-de-sac. And this board deals with that all the time. And, but the intention is there to have a sidewalk, but not two, because that's double the impermeable surface that's necessary for something that, in the whole scheme of things, doesn't happen a whole lot in our neighborhoods because people aren't walking that much or in that number to require a sidewalk on both sides of the street. Now, we've got other areas that have no sidewalks on either side of the street, or we have a state highway, 140, that is dangerous as hell to drive on, let alone to ride your bike or walk. But there's, there's no place for either of those, the whole, almost the whole stretch of the roadway. So the only places that we can get sidewalks is in the commercial areas where something gets redeveloped and require, we require the developer through site plan approval to put in a sidewalk or to rebuild the sidewalks. So it's, it's very limited in, in terms of how you can just easily, you know, way along and get all these, get all these sidewalks.
So I, I definitely think that sidewalks in the subdivisions is not, it's not necessary to have two, right? But there, but when, there's plenty of other neighborhoods that aren't in subdivisions exactly that absolutely should have two sidewalks.
On the collector rolls.
And, yeah, not, and to, to your point, not, you know, there's nothing that we can do really about the state highway because as the state highway gets, gets redeveloped or whatever, the state requires that we put all this stuff in. So whether people are going to use it or not, it, it has to be there or you don't get the funding. But I do really like the idea of looking at, you know, when we, the town, make improvements to the parallel type roads, trying to, trying to like put, put together a vision of there, it would be really nice if this road that has no sidewalks had at least a sidewalk on one side of the road, right? And, and to include that into the walkability so that you can get around, like, in particular, I mean, the bike path goes, the bike path does lots of stuff north of 16, but it doesn't really do much of anything south of 16. So, and, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of neighborhoods that aren't subdivision down there, so.
But the, the walkability of 16 from the intersection of 109 to the hospital is fantastic.
But how, how much?
Because, I mean, I grew up, often walked that way, had that, I had to walk the slow and go ahead, and, you know, the sidewalks are wide enough.
There's a few more cars on the road than when you were walking.
I understand that, but still.
Sidewalks.
The sidewalks, the sidewalks on 16 from, from 10, the intersection of 109 and 16 are plenty wide enough on both sides of the road and they're safe.
That's true. They just have to be maintained.
And after this next project, DOT, it'll be that way from there east.
I walk by there all the time.
Well, it's at Beaver Street, so.
I, I would agree with that. I think on 16 specifically, the town, Milford is far ahead of where some other towns are with their state routes that run through a town center or something like that in terms of walkability. I mean, we've heard a fair amount in this process about safety on that corridor for pedestrians specifically, but the, I think the, the context of traditional downtown development, the buildings sort of at the edge of, back of the edge of the sidewalk, all of that contributes to a walkable feel in that area. I think there, you know, maintenance, safety, always keeping pedestrian crossings and crosswalks up to date and, you know, painted, that's, those sort of things will help with that safety. The signalization and crossing for pedestrians and getting, making sure the, you know, pedestrian timing and even the, like, leading pedestrian intervals and things like that do help a lot with pedestrian safety and walkability. So.
Actually, you need a class of pedestrians to understand what the little button means.
If you press the button and you don't wait for the button to trigger the thing, you're really.
It's the gratification thing. People press the button, expect it to go to walk immediately. It's like, they look, doesn't go to walk, they just cross.
They walk and then the light turns red.
A minute later, yeah, a minute later, the light turns to walk.
And then nobody's crossing.
They're gone.
But being on a scooter recently and, and by some of my mode of travel, it's, I stay off the sidewalks as much as possible because they beat the hell out of you. But when it comes to an intersection, I do. I go in there, I hit the button, wait, and I want to feel safe. I don't want to look at something barreling down on me. And if the people would do that too, like, like Joe says, they'd be a lot safer too.
Yeah.
Like I say, 16 is good. 16 is not too bad going up to, to Stop and Shop right now on the left-hand side of the road going up, but. And 109, they got a sidewalk, good, that goes as far as Coles, I think.
Yeah, on that side.
On the right-hand side, so.
Yeah, continues all the way through on the right?
Yeah, sure.
There's a break. I don't know.
I feel like there's a break somewhere after Birch Street in those.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, I thought, I think there's a break after Birch. I don't think there's a continuation in front of the, in front of the bank and then, and then the houses going down.
I think the house is.
Fairview.
Yeah, planning board probably should put the bank as a sidewalk.
I forget, there's no place to connect.
Been a long time since I walked on that area.
But, I mean, in general, it's not.
No. And again, I use the trail with the, I go down as many side streets as I can.
It'll be interesting to see which.
If I'm going to Hoboken, I grab the trail and go up to get the Central Street.
Yeah, but I know there are areas.
I go down on 109 with the trails.
Getting the trail across Purchase Street, I think, is probably the biggest, just, I live up in the, I've lived up in the neighborhoods, right? And I've used the trail many times and that's to, getting across Purchase Street is the scary part of that.
Yeah, but getting a trail there is, is trying to get one there beside.
I, I don't disagree, but that's, I'm just saying.
It's only hard land-wise with the, that's just to get the land would be almost impossible and then get the money too to do it is.
That's the way you find in what you do.
It's just a busy day.
It's a busy.
Having a, having a sidewalk on Cedar Street would be nice. I know it's a.
They've been, putting it on, they built one. They've been putting it, they've been putting it on, they built one to Plain Spack now.
Yeah.
So they've been putting them on as much as possible.
It'd be nice to have one up to the trail.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's limited right away to, you can't put it on the, you can't put it on the outbound, the left side going outbound, because you've got the sewer line, you can't go on top of it.
Yeah.
You can't change the grade, I mean, you could go on top of it, but you can't change the grade, which is the killer. Anyway, that's, that's more for us later on, I mean, it'll be important in terms of the plan, to see where the connections are.
Other thoughts about the, this map? As Larry suggested, or as Larry mentioned, we are having a Zoom call with Larry later this week to go through the maps, which will be in the document, just to make sure that we've got all the feedback that we can get in terms of accurate data and reflecting it appropriately. All right, so our next steps are pretty clear. For anyone who is interested, people can grab all sorts of information off the website for this project at Milford Comp Plan. And then, we will be, as we're putting all this together, continuing to also make sure that the themes, goals, strategies, vision statement, all of that, we're continuing to wash through in terms of just making sure it's reflecting everything we've heard, and double-checking language, et cetera. We do want to coordinate not as extensive a collection as we did at the beginning of the process, but we do want to circle back with some of the municipal interviews, which we did previously, to just talk about how the recommendations have emerged, and actions, et cetera, just to ground-truth those a little bit. We will continue drafting the plan document on the timeline that we talked about. We'll add into our thinking, sending through Larry some of the draft chapters as they come along, so that he can distribute those to all of you. And then we do want to have a series of, when we get to the draft, having the draft plan document, we'll want to send that out to the project community, and have a comment period with the community, just so that they can reflect on it and provide any feedback they might have, community members. And then we also are thinking, one of the culminating events that we'd like to do, we had a meeting back in June with community-based organizations, and so I think we'd like to see if we can get that, a similar group as what we met with in June, back together, and talk with them with the draft plan in hand, and just see if they would be both recipients of that information, to take a look at it, but also distribute that out through their networks as well, as another way to get the draft plan circulated. Our next meeting together is on the 18th of March, that gives us a little more time to keep working on all of this, and then we'll hopefully have another progress report, and be much closer at that point, and have, gather feedback from you all at that point, too. Any questions, thoughts?
We should probably look at a draft contract extension agreement, because the contract ends March 31, correct?
Yeah, we have.
So, depending on how things are shaping up, and, you know, of what everybody's comfortable with, you know, come up with a document that can finalize or formalize fairly quickly, but it would need to be done before the contract ends.
Correct.
So.
It, we, it's unclear whether or not it will be necessary. We have, in addition to the town's funding, have funding which is not from the town, which is through technical assistance and things, and things. So, we potentially can expend the town's funding by March 31, even if there are some items that remain on, that remain for us to do in the process.
Well, I wasn't so worried about paying for it, I was worried about it being done. So if it's not done, and they've adopted it, then we need to extend the contract.
Yeah, you probably, you probably should, because it probably states in there that it'll be completed by that date. So no matter what, the contract probably would be, just to, I don't expect it to be a problem or anything, but it would probably just make sense to extend it, or submit, I mean, it may not be anything more than you having to request for an extension of, of time to us, and do it, but I, just, just so it's legally covered, I, I don't expect it to be an issue in any other way.
So even if you do it for another month, and see how it goes, and if that's not going to be enough.
You may as well, you may as well do it for at least a couple months.
But I would, I would suggest that, in terms of the most likely scenario, because I think you're going to need to continue it at least a month, but I would prepare for that kind of thing, and then, because I think you signed the contract as town administrator, right?
I think so, yes.
So, he might not want to sign it, you never know. You and me both. So, yeah, well, that's why there's some urgency, we're, I'm getting out of here. So, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that. We will, I can prepare a time-only extension.
I know.
What I would probably suggest, then, if, if, it sounds like you all think that's necessary, I think we would probably want to do it through, like, May 31st is what I would suggest.
If you want to, if you want to extend it to the, to the end of June, and just.
Might not be that idea.
Fiscal year.
All right. Finish it, or we'll, it'll be.
That's why I brought it up now.
Good, sounds good. Yeah, I'll prepare that, should be, it's a simple, simple form, yeah.
I'm predicting we may want to, it sounds like we may want to give a, if we need a preliminary at town meeting, to do a, a, a town meeting.
Remind me of town meeting date again?
May.
Something, make something.
Yeah, third Monday in May.
Victoria. But this doesn't, this doesn't go to town meetings.
Yeah, no, this is not, I, I know it doesn't go to town meeting, I'm saying, we can, before town meeting, give a preliminary for it at least.
Would there be any value in keeping the public comment period open through town meeting?
No.
No.
It would make it longer.
I agree with Larry, I don't think you need to, I really don't.
I don't think you even need a public comment.
I'm just going to get a quick drink. I'm going to get a quick drink of water.
Definitely don't want to.
In my guess, thank you.
Okay.
I would play, I would play that by, by year to a certain extent. If you get, if you get good response back, then I would say no. Response back is, you know, if we're scraping to get response back, then that may be appropriate, but let's see what you end up getting when you go back out.
So what was the date you were kicking around? The end of May is the contract extension, so when we look at text.
I would just do the end of the fiscal, June 30, we'll do that.
Well, I'm trying to get it done, I'm not, I'm not trying.
We're not, we're not stopping it from getting done, Larry, I mean, it's just, I don't, I don't think there's a need to file a piece of date, because we didn't, we didn't extend it long enough. I don't think anybody here is trying to, to do that, but let's just do one piece of paper by, you know, the end of June, and I think that's done. We would expect the report in by then.
I agree, yeah, we, we're trying to get it done, too.
Yeah.
Sounds good. That is all I had, so thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grant, Rick, thank you. Just a little bit more. Okay, we got, what we got here, bond release.
Left, right, wrong. This is a bond release for Platinum Park Transportation Terminal, 472 East Main. Town engineer's letter verifying that everything is done, recommending release in the pond for $150,000.
Any questions from the board?
Everything's all set, Liz?
Yeah.
Good, all set. Move to release the remaining $150,000 performance bond on, for Platinum Park Transportation Terminal Project. Is that in order?
Yeah.
One second.
Move the second, one question, is that just through the traffic? Is there a bond for the, the bond itself?
For the lot itself?
The physical work, did you ever ask?
No, typically, right?
That would have been through John anyway, right?
Yeah, so the only thing, I think, that was on, I'm pretty certain that they already.
Yeah, I think they completed everything else, they didn't come for, so there was, the only thing that was left outside was the possibility of, once they started functioning, the traffic stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, because they did final pave there.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. Yeah, they did it.
I think the bond in the first place was primarily the soft site, traffic stuff.
Right, I knew that.
Yeah, that's why he was just asking.
I know they did do the landscaping and everything before they started, so.
Yeah, before they got occupants.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of five. Okay, we got a special permit for 21 Princeton Drive for a variance and or.
Variance and special permit, I am planning on going to Princeton. The applicant requests a variance and or special permit to allow for a second story issued to the existing single-family dwelling and attached garage on the subject property. Existing lot is substandard as to area, and the existing house encroaches into the sideyard setback. Proposed addition will also include a two-story, 10-foot rear extension of the existing attached garage. There's a site plan back in the past that showed some figuration. The second floor portion of the proposed addition will accommodate for remodeling and expansion of bedrooms and bathrooms within the existing single-family dwelling. 690 square feet of the second floor proposed garage addition would accommodate a dwelling unit accessory to the existing single-family dwellings for the site plan subsequently be approved by the planning board. House was built in the mid-'60s, and subsequent zoning and bylaw changes over the years have resulted in both setbacks and lot size becoming non-performing. Recommending a favorable report and sent to the ZBA. So eventually they'll come back for an ADU site plan.
Okay, the addition's not affecting the site setbacks anyway, right?
Well, it's, it's extending, but decreasing, and it's going up, so.
Well, going up, yeah, I know it was going up, yeah.
Part of, part of the device of requesting the special permit in the end areas is to set them up for the site plan review as well.
It is, it is not more encroaching.
No, it's, it's encroaching on the far part, and the end of it actually comes into a zoning conflict.
Right, eventually, yep.
Okay.
Actually, actually, it looks like the shed is doing conforming, too. I guess, I guess they just didn't want to point that out. Might be in the future, though, Larry, I don't know.
Well, not if they do the one over the garage.
Well, you just, you said they're going to be three family, it'll be two.
Well, yeah, the state, it's a couple of years, you're right.
Recommend that we transmit a favorable report to the zoning board with the appeals regarding the 31 Princeton Drive variance special permit request.
Second. Move the second, and we send a favorable recommendation to the zoning board. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five.
All right, this is the, this is the fun one. This is a new special permit for Beaver Street. Let me read through it quickly, and then I'll explain it in English. This application is incomplete due to lack of sufficient site plan having been provided with the submittal. Nonetheless, the applicant's requesting a special permit to allow for improvements of the property and to allow the existing concrete paved area to remain intact on the subject property. It be noted that residential sports courts are special permit uses in residential zones subject to ZBA special permit. The applicant states in his filing that the premises are not to be utilized as a residential sports facility, nor will the applicant install any nets, turf, or other sports equipment not otherwise permitted other than the Milford zoning bylaw. This begs the question as to why the special permit application was submitted at all for purportedly accessory use that otherwise appears to be permitted in residential districts. I find no provision in the current zoning bylaw that permits the ZBA to act on this case. Therefore, I recommend the application be dismissed for lack of subject matter jurisdiction. So basically, what that means is there's nothing there for the ZBA to vote on, and how we got to this point was that I think the applicant, in fact, originally built a sports court, and was sent a zoning violation notice. Unfortunately, the zoning violation notice was in error in the manner and type of violation that was noted, because the violation noted that those uses aren't allowed in an industrial zone. Well, the property is not in an industrial zone, the property's in a residential zone, and the violation was that the sports court was built without the special permit. Well, if they've taken it down, and it's no longer a sports court, there's no special permit to seek, and this paperwork in the application, as I mentioned, and as you can see, is proclaiming that it's never, ever, ever going to be a sports court. So, it's, it's not a case that they have any jurisdiction over, but it's not a case. Now, as soon as they put the net back up and start using it as a sports court, they'll get another violation, and hopefully it'll be done properly this time. But, but Walt, if you want to have a sports court, you can have a sports court by special permit. But after multiple submissions of, of applications, it's still, yeah. So this is what we ended up with, and in talking with town council, and special counsel, this is the, the appropriate move to make on the part of the ZBA, and that is to dismiss it for lack of subject matter jurisdiction. So, I guess a motion from the board, from you guys, or the recommendation, would be to send an unfavorable report, because they have no subject matter jurisdiction, if that makes sense.
The motion, we, we send it unfavorable to the ZBA, and attached Larry's letter indicating that, and we also believe that there is no jurisdictional reasoning for the application.
Second. They moved the second, any discussion? I got a, just a quick question. They say this is an existing.
Sports court.
Sports, uh.
Well, they say it's an existing paved area, don't they?
It is an existing paved area.
Recently paved?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so it's not an existing, it's a just built?
It was, it was.
Well, this is the trot line part.
Yes, so up to the right-hand side of the house.
Yeah.
They cleared and paved, and put up nets, that's why they got the violation. And then, when they got the violation, they took the nets down, and now it's just a paved area.
Well, I look at the GIS, and I don't see anything on there, there, now, so this, this is just recently built, and it's a, it's a violation of the zoning bylaw.
If it's a sports court, it's a violation, otherwise it's not a violation.
Right.
And this, and this particular aerial isn't the most recent, because the most recent was at a worse date, so to speak, so there's even more foliage, and you can't, and you see less of the yard than this particular photo, but I think this may have been a 2021 or 23 version. So the photo is, is old, and I wouldn't have shown it anyway. But I wanted to be able to actually see part of the dirt on the yard.
Well, I just don't remember the trot line's evidence.
No, 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 they didn't.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, send, send the unfavorable report?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous of five. Pleasure to the board. Move the second to adjourn. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, good evening.
Wow, nice, quick one.